And we're recording.
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading a biography about Latvia, I felt a little bit more emotional than I usually do. So, alright, roll call.
Mrs. Hall, ready? Ready, is she coming? Mrs. Bell.
Yeah.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Eric.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Scott, here.
Mrs. Struble.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Alright, so, um... I'm gonna call for the Superintendents Report, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start out, I'm gonna share with the Board that we had our new teacher induction last week. We welcomed 21 new professional staff to our Blasian Learning Community. The week was facilitated by Mrs. Owens for three days of orientation and training to acclimate our new staff to the district. A second item I'll share is the transportation issue that has been articulated with regard to PM drop-off times from this past Saturday's correspondence, which we released and made alive on Infinite Campus, was updated and corrected at 5:20 PM today's. That was updated, correspondence was sent out, and was corrected. And our Facilities and Transportation Department will continue to reach out to inquiries received over the next couple of days with families who have expressed some additional concerns related to the busing. So they're going through the calls and the emails and working arduously on making corrections. We opened up the school year with all of our district professional staff, support staff, our contracted service providers commencing with a breakfast this morning prior to our welcoming back, opening day session for an hour in the auditorium, and then we had some in-service sessions today. That will continue over the course of the next two days here with our professional staff and some of our support staff. And look forward to welcoming our students back for the 22-23 school year on Thursday. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Okay, so for procedures for public participation, if you have a prepared statement to be read to the Board, you should have a copy to present to the Board President prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the Board. Your three to minute time limit will begin when you start to speak, and when your three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that's not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Having said that, do we have any presentations by the public on agenda items? Okay, seeing none. So we do have a couple of agenda edits that we will need to make a motion on. I do not have to take them individually, do I? Okay, so, so the agenda edits we have under 7A1. The edited item for Diane Frederick, retirement, we updated the retirement date to September 1. Number four, under professional, we added Amanda Benz from the middle school, resignation effective October 10. Classified items number 7A12. Kimberly Hall, we had a typo listed as a resignation, is actually a retirement, so that'll be a change. Removed item A, I'm sorry, 7A213. Removed that item, moved it to 7A312, because that's where it actually belongs. And then, in place of that, item 3, we added Diane Frederick, English teacher, paid leave from August 22 to October 5, using personal days and sick days combination. The last thing that we had to add to the agenda is under 5A9, which would be Finance Added Consent, Motion to Approve Purchase of the Transfinder Transportation Act for the 22-23 school year for the amount of $2,400 as recommended by the Technology Committee. Can I have a motion for all of those to be added or amended to the agenda as presented? Can I get a second for that?
Second.
And then we'll need to have a vote to add those items to the agenda.
Mrs. Bell.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett.
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni.
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Struble.
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson.
Yes.
And Miss Olson.
Yes.
Is that all of us?
That's all.
Okay. Alright, I fell short. So since we just added some items to the agenda, I am going to ask again if anybody wants to make a comment on agenda items. Seeing none. Can I get a motion under consent items for consent 3A1 through 19?
Motion.
I need a second. These were all on the Committee of the Whole. Do we have any comments, questions, concerns at this time before we vote? Mr. Scott?
Sure.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson?
Yes. So we don't have any personnel consent items because we had a special voting meeting last time. So under Finance Added Consent, we have... I would like to get a motion for 5A1 through 9 minus 5, is that correct?
6.
Minus 6. So for 5A1 through 9, with the exception of 6. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Aye.
Mr. Scott, so, um... The reason we have, just for the folks assembled, we have one member of the Board that has to abstain on one of them, so I'm voting on that separately. So, um, we should probably, I would like to ask the Chair of the Technology Committee to talk just quickly about the Transfinder app that we're gonna, that we added to the agenda, just briefly.
Can we do that now?
Yeah, because now we're gonna vote on it, so...
Yes, in our meeting...
Can you show him the mic? Yes, thank you.
In our meeting today, it came up that we discussed the problem that occurred, like it does almost every year, some of the transmissions between Transfinder and Infinite Campus. An opportunity for us to purchase that app that would be, that would stop people having to go directly to, or go to Infinite Campus, take a direct to Transfinder information. So it would eliminate that problem this year with the data transferring incorrectly and then uploading incorrectly. So it would eliminate a lot of...
Yeah, it would've given people a secondary option to see.
From Transfinder, and it also allows for different information, which Infinite Campus currently cannot do. For example, there's a child who has different drop-offs Monday, Tuesday, and Monday, Wednesday, different parents, the two, the other parent. And the campus can't handle that, whereas this app would be able to directly go there and get that information, we'd post it both at the same time. So with $2,400 a year coming through, considering what happened this year, we want to try and eliminate those data transferations that would give great help to the public and for the amount of calls coming in, the concern as to what's what. So it was a motion for us to step forward.
Anybody who wasn't at the Committee, wanna ask any other questions about the app?
My only concern, like, will it cause more confusion? They don't, so they'll know to follow Transfinder, not to follow the app.
If there's an issue, I don't forget, especially if you made that there's an issue with the upload, there's at least a turnip opportunity for them to go to where the data was correct. There's other things in the works so that that doesn't continue to happen, obviously. That's the symptom, there's other problems, this is a good band-aid or a backstop to the speed in case it happens again.
Yeah, and then, yeah, the discussion we had in the Technology Committee, you know, absolutely, you know, we listened to feedback from parents that, you know, they don't want 70 different places to go for information. I get that, you know, but if we had that secondary place for information, Saturday would've gone a little bit smoother for our parents, you know? And, so...
It would've worked on Saturday.
And...
It's Transfinder.
It would've worked on Saturday.
Will Transfinder give us some kind of deal on that?
They already, we asked, and we're already getting a deal. So...
It was an excellent deal, actually.
Yeah, and if we do it, we will only be doing it for one year. If we're not getting a value add out of it, we don't have to continue.
We'll get a look at the data, how many people downloaded the app, how many questions used the app, so we'll leave some good data for us to ensure to say, was that worth?
Any other questions about that, from the Board, on that or anything else before we vote? Mr. Scott?
Just to be clear, we're doing the 5A1 through 9 except 6.
Minus 6, that's correct?
Yep, got it, 6.
Okay.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
What did you say?
Yes.
Excuse me, I apologize, my microphone isn't working. Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Okay, so moving on to 5A6, can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
And Ms. Thompson's second. And Ms. Leoni, you just have to let everybody know why you're abstaining. And you had the paperwork for her.
I don't have the paperwork.
I haven't.
He has, yes.
Yeah, he didn't even jump on it.
So, any comments, questions, concerns before we vote? Mr. Scott?
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni? Oh, sorry, I missed that. Mr. Scott, yes. Mr. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Miss Olson?
Yes, every time. And, okay, so program added consent, program added consents, I've got 6A1 through 4. Can I get a motion for those?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Struble?
Who made the first?
Ms. Bell.
Oh, Ms. Bell, thank you.
So we've got our senior class trip, we've got some job descriptions, and something we're already letting our, well, we're, um... You'll see that we're waving, we're voting on whether or not to waive the entrance fee for our students to see our athletic contest. We're really trying to, after the years of COVID, trying to reengage the rest of the student community to support their student athletes, again, in the stands by waiving that, by waiving those entrance fees this year. We've seen, we've seen our students, our student athlete contingent start to pick up again since COVID, the COVID years are a little bit behind us, but we have not seen the number of people in the stands increase to where it was pre-pandemic. And so we'd like to see more kids out there rooting for their classmates. So any comments, questions, concerns from the Board before we vote? Yeah?
I still have a question. For the two job descriptions, were they taken from other positions? Where did some of the job description pieces come from? Were they just kind of...
Yes, as we were looking to replace Mrs. Barco and out of the position and taking a look at who we currently have in that office with Ms. Kern, we've taken the two positions and kind of reshuffled some things, so with responsibilities of each one of those roles and kind of created these two positions off of those other two positions.
So it's the same couple of people doing the work, it's just being separated differently, I think?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is this to relieve some of the stress?
Yes.
Any other, that's a good question, any other comments, questions, concerns? You had a vote? Oh, no, we did the motion part, now it's time for voting.
You're so good.
Thank you.
Right?
Yep.
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
Miss Olson?
Yes.
Okay, Personnel Added Consent, that was where I had the lion's share of my agenda edits. So can I get a motion for 7A1 through 3 as amended?
Motion.
Ms. Thompson, can I get a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns before we vote? Can I get a vote?
Sure. Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson?
Yes.
Okay, under Old Business, 8A1 and 2, can I get a motion for those? No, a second was you?
No, I think that was Mrs. Bell.
Mrs. Bell? I'll get a second, Mr. Struble. Any comments, questions, concerns? Can I get a vote?
Mrs. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Leoni?
Yes.
Mr. Scott, yes. Mrs. Struble?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Olson?
Yes. Under New Business, we got nothing? Okay, time for presentations by the public on any item. Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
I know sometimes it's not.
Oh, sorry, it's all the signs, please turn on my microphone. Okay, so, there's obviously been conversations regarding school policies that we are currently obviously enacting, maybe towards future readings regarding that. Another concern that has popped up that I am gonna mention, Title IX. I know Dr. Cooper's aware of it, I'm just not sure whether the Board is aware of it. On June 23rd, Biden Administration announced a new federal, excuse me, federal law that would impose major changes on how schools and members should be qualified, men and women. By passing Congress, the Administration providing a 1972 law called Title IX that prohibits discrimination, quote-unquote, on the basis of sex. The Biden Administration's goal would redefine sex to include gender identity and sexual orientation. It means that your school filed a federal law if it also fails to recognize and accept a student or staff member's gender identity. In order to avoid violating this new law, schools will have to become highly focused on everyone's gender identity. And then it says, "What will my school be forced to do?" I'm reading this off the Parents of Education website, I would send you the link in your email. Many school activities involving separating students based on sex would be implicated. Under the new rule, schools can only separate students based on gender identity, non-fiscal gender, that is, based on what the student identifies as. That'll impact sports, bathrooms and locker rooms, field trips and overnight stays, sex education, gender pronouns, and it goes on. Hey, my school ignored this new rule, in order to receive federal funding, schools must certify that if they're in compliance with federal law. The Biden Administration will force every school to obey its gender identity revolution by withholding federal funding for noncompliance. I'm only sharing this with everybody so that one that it's public knowledge and it's reported, that anybody listening along will understand what is gonna be coming down the pipeline. Now, I understand there's lots of communication regarding the transportation. This will be one of the biggest, that, do you think the transportation was something that was causing upward? This will have every parent in the district coming in, and this can have implications on enrollment and federal funding based on this rule. So I'm only sharing this since I'm going to be uncovering the violation of Pennsylvania Constitutional Rights for a student, as was our actual Constitution in the Republic. So that's all I'm sharing.
I'll send you an email because there's one somewhere.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Rachel Northall, North Street, Marysboro. So I'll send you all an email, I'll say, like I said, there are links in here. But September 17th is Constitution Day, and you say, "What is Constitution Day?" And Constitution Day is the District Constitution Day, citizens of the United States have celebrated Independence Day and President's Day since the 1870s, and in 2005, the nation began celebrating Constitution Day, also known as the Citizenship Day. Constitution Day is an American holiday honoring the day 39 delegates to the Constitutional Convention, signing the United States Constitution. So again, I'll send this to you, but I'd like to see all the schools go over and celebrate our Constitution, offer, you know, standing here, speaking freely, and all the freedoms that we have. I think it's really important, and not only that, it also greets over when folks become natural citizens too, so everything's really, really, really big. So is there any way to have this added in activities? The one link on the PowerPoint has like different suggestions for fun activities, like, you know, a student can have like a box, and you ask them questions, and he tells them all the Constitution, or even like singing Pedro songs and things like that.
Put it in the news by the parents.
Yeah, no, you can add that too. So, that's what we have, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Need some more clues for your turn? I have a question. So we heard your, like, permits for fuel tanks, where are they being stored? I hope not on school, because of fuel schools. Who's paying for them? Because that's another price on top of this very cheap company, plus company, saving money. And then you have the Transfinder, which came out to $27,900, first two payments, one in July, one in August, I believe. Now you have this app, and Rhodes, I can't see for Klein, but I know Dow has complained many times to administration how Transfinder and Infinity, they do this, they do this, it doesn't work. And no one, no one, I guess, cares, just like school was supposed to do transportation this year, but they knew this, and I heard they did not do it. So that's another $27,900 on top of this contract this year. And then $30,000 for Cottage 7 that you're gonna pay for this year, per year, for transportation that Rhodes always took care of. I'm just saying, this is all adding up. We're talking about cheaper, but money's just being thrown, and especially fuel tanks, they are expensive. I would really love to know where they're being stored. Oh, and you said for the app, it's $2,400 a year. Is that going to, price gonna take over, because they're supposed to take over transportation next year? So will we still pay for it next year? And, oh, busing, I'm wondering if they cut down any buses? And Max gets on there only because my daughter goes to IC, she's on that bus for almost 59 minutes from school to home, which I think is crazy. I was a bus driver, I had the longest route last year, I did double school, I did IC, and I did primary, so double. I was not, those kids were not on there that long, at all. That's long for a child, especially elementary, 59 minutes to be on a bus. Then someone asked me, my daughter, kindergarten, is on a bus, get me, she's picked up at 7:25 in the morning to go to kindergarten, that means she's gonna be on the bus for almost an hour too. Because that means she's, whoever's driving her is letting on high school or middle school and going straight to, she must be the first stop. And I went for a kindergarten, that's unacceptable. So I wanna know if they cut down buses, to see how bus drivers, routes, money, fuel, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't know if you wanna pick up the mic or just lean in? Yeah, thank you.
My only question is that if you're expecting to see an increase in attendance of school teams, how is the bus being parked on school property going to affect that?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we start school this week. It's been a medical summer, and I hope that, I really hope that beginning of school year isn't quite as medical. And I don't think anyone else has anything to say about those school year starts, but now's the best chance. Alright?
Can I ask you a little question?
Yeah.
So, we've been hoping for a while now that we know where these buses are being stored, we have a location. As a Board member, when are we gonna have a location? Huh? I mean, we were told for a while that they would have a location.
Correct.
I will share that information with the Board, and you update when I get it.
Anything else from the Board? Can I get a motion to a jar? Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright. Alright, stay safe for a minute.